Pardon me? Oh, Jackie, you're saying?
No.
No, I'm sorry. Yard of the Month, okay. Oh, I thought that was that couple back there. Okay. Okay, so I'll probably just to put her on, I'm sure she's not on an agenda. She probably just didn't know which one. Yes, okay.
Erica.
Thank you, Erica.
Ray, if you want. I'll see Claire tomorrow night at my seminar. She's coming, she comes to all of them. If you want, I'll give it to her. I'll give it to her. She's like ninety, she's chance of coming to a meeting. It's like Sunday night. If you want me to, I will.
You mean the Yard of the Month? Oh, surely, that'd be great. Okay, then I'll mention her and then say that you're gonna give it to her.
Got it.
Wonderful. Okay.
She just lost her husband.
Bowman?
Yeah, Hans.
Bowman? Okay, so are we set?
Councilwoman Bravo?
Present.
Okay.
Good evening.
Just wanted to check to make sure you, you can hear us.
I can hear you, thank you.
We're good to go?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Loeb?
Here.
Councilwoman Best?
Present.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Here.
Here.
There is a forum present.
Thank you. All stand, please, for the invocation by Councilman Loeb.
Dear Lord, please keep our men and women in uniform in your prayers with you and keep them safe. Please help us do the right thing for our citizens. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Welcome, everyone, to our March thirteenth city council meeting. It's great to see so many faces in the audience tonight. We're going to get started with the awards and presentations and the, the first award, we're going to defer for a future meeting. The Eastern Flight 401 dedication efforts. Beverly wasn't able to be with us tonight. So we'll go to-
Mayor, I'm sorry. Before we move on to four, in order of business, I'd like to propose that we add to the agenda under new business. I'd like to bring up for discussion and then ultimately propose a resolution with reference to the, the April fourth election referendum that we have. Can I have consensus to put that on the, on the agenda under new business?
Okay.
I have no objection.
It sounds good. So that'll be under Agenda Item eleven.
Yes.
Business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mayor, you, you should all have a copy of the proposed resolution on the dais.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move to the next agenda item, which is the award for the Yard of the Month. And the Yard of the Month for March twenty twenty-three goes to Hans and Claire Bowman. And the yard is three fifty Reinett Drive. And I have the certificate. They're not able to be with us tonight, but Councilman Best knows them and he said he will kindly drop by and, and drop off the certificate. I wanted to just encourage our residents this month. If you have, you're driving around and you have some time, please drive by three fifty Reinett Drive. Reinett is, for those of you that don't know, it's kind of behind Fair Havens right there. And see the beautiful Yard of the Month. And we thank the Bowman family very, very much for beautifying Miami Springs. Hey, and our next agenda item is recognizing our City Hall Artist of the Month. The students from the AIE. So Councilman Behat, I'll let you do the honors.
Sure, I'd like to invite the high school art teacher at AIE, Ms. Andrea Rodriguez, up to say a few words. And I think that the students can come up when you're, you're done. I'll let you take over. Go ahead and speak into the mic, Ms. Rodriguez.
Hello?
Just bring it down.
Hello?
Yep.
Okay, there we go. Hi, I'm Ms. Rodriguez. I'm the studio art teacher for AIE. So this month, we were fortunate to have some of my artists who are in the crowd right now. Thanks, hi, guys. Congratulations. They got their artwork up this month. Some of the artwork you'll see downstairs is that I showed them the proportions of the face in quadrants of four. And then they had to use those proportions to make celebrities. Basically, just recognizing that you can almost make any face or any person using those measurements and proportions. We also did some Polaroid pictures that's supposed to like represent places they would like to go in the future after they graduate. They can take it home. It'd be sweet if you guys could actually visit those places and then maybe have your own Polaroid in the future with you actually at the location you want to go to once you guys get older. And then the last thing you'll see on one of the walls is we did artwork for Black History Month. And it's supposed to represent some famous artists from throughout the years, like Aaron Douglas and Carol Walker, as well as some influential black figures that they either drew a portrait of them and then found a quote to go with it. But so far, that's what we've done the last couple of months. Yeah.
That's wondering what grades?
Um, this is ninth through twelfth grade.
Wonderful, high school.
Yeah.
Thank you, students, so much for beautifying City Hall for this whole month. It really makes it so exciting when, you know, people come to the City Hall to run an errand, to take care of some business. And, and we have a new art display right there for them to enjoy and view. So we really greatly appreciate it and we want to take a photo altogether. So come on up.
We need all the artists up on the stage.
You can give it to Shannon if you want, Mike.
Okay, so we'll move to open forum now. We have one person signed up to speak, Ms. Perez. And let me just explain, open forum. It's two to three minutes. It is an opportunity for whoever signs up to speak to reach solid. It's one-way communication is what I like to say. We listen, we're all ears, but we don't respond. It's just you speak to us and after the meeting or next day, if you want to reach out to any of us individually, you're welcome to do that or to our city staff to discuss the issue further.
Okay, understood. Good evening, my name is Melida Perez. I live at five zero nine High Crest Drive. And I'm here tonight to ask the city to consider installing outdoor basketball courts. We realized the other day when we were driving around looking for some courts, the, it was a school day. There was no school. And the rec was being utilized for private events. And we just realized there was nowhere here. So we had to either go to Hialeah or Doral. And we came home frustrated and I was talking to my family and they mentioned that somebody else had just posted the exact same situation, that they drove around and couldn't find anywhere to play. And so I thought, well, it's not just me. And I thought, I'll, you know, talk to the city council and see if it's something we can add. I think it would enhance our city. And it's Miami Springs is amazing. My, my kids ride around on their bikes and they, you'll see them with their fishing rods and they go to the lake and they just go to each other's homes. And I just think it'd be great to have that as another option. And I think we could find something that would be considerate, you know, of our neighbors as well. I'll be speaking tomorrow at the recreation meeting as well. And so I look forward to doing whatever I can to help make this happen.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next agenda item is approval of the council minutes from the February twenty-seventh regular meeting.
Through the chair, motion to move item six A.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Loeb?
Aye.
Councilwoman Best?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Behat?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. We move to Agenda Item nine. The consent agenda is, are there, there's three items on here. Is there anything that someone would like to pull out to consider separately? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Loeb?
Aye.
Councilwoman Best?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Behat?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Through the chair, Mayor, if I might, just to let folks know that they're in chambers tonight. The majority of these three items, some of you may have the agenda, some might not. Two of them are to do with the golf course. It's a pretty big chunk of money here between the three of them, like eight hundred thousand dollars plus. And, and the other one was, was for the, the managers of, of the Oakwood Stormwater Drive, Stormwater Drain Project on the east side. So just so you're aware of that.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, so let's see. Our next agenda item will be then under new business. Councilman Behat has an item.
Thank you, Mayor. So I got my, my mail-in ballot in the mail and, and I, I was reading through it and saw the, the five charter amendments that are on the ballot. The referendum one through five. And I also had some residents that reached out about the fifth one. It's, it's a cleanup item, but it bears some clarification. So I will ask at, at one point for, for Heidi to just clarify for all of us. But it struck me that as I got calls from residents about, hey, what's number five about? That like, we want to make sure that people are clear about what they're voting on because they're gonna vote. These five items, referendum, charter amendment items are all to clean up things that are either impractical or impossible. As evidenced in some cases by no city doing it the way we were doing it. It was kind of an oddball way of doing things. So it's in conversation with Heidi. It's possible that somebody could have voted, we could have voted five zero to put it on the ballot, but somebody may not have agreed to it, but wanted the voters to decide. But I think it's important, the city is limited in terms of what we can do in terms of promoting a ballot measure. But what we can do is we can be clear with the public that we're all in agreement with it. And so this is a referee, a resolution, just saying that we as a council support the five referendum items that are on the April fourth election ballot. And I think that that would signal to, to folks that, you know, we're behind it. I think you had mentioned at a previous meeting, like, these are all just kind of housekeeping things to help, you streamline the, the charter and our processes when it comes to these items. We're not to benefit. As a matter of fact, I willingly carved myself out of one of them so that, you know, it, it's just, it's just to help and none of us are gonna benefit from it. So I just wanted to proffer that as, as a way for us to kind of promote that we support these measures as people start filling out these ballots and, and vote on April fourth.
Thank you, Councilman.
Through the chair. Walt, I commend you for, for thinking of option to put out to us. And I think it sends a strong message to the community that we are in fact behind every, every, every one of these. And I totally understand your purpose and I applaud you again with that motion to move the item. Second.
Can, can we, before we vote, can you clarify? Because I think they're, they're all pretty straightforward and I think you can speak to what the city does have in terms of resources for folks. But if we can just get clarification on the fifth one, because that one's a, a little, it's worded a bit tricky.
Absolutely. Through the chair? Yes, Councilwoman, did you have, did you want to?
Um, can we also get clarification on item number one? I had a lot of calls on that as well.
Okay. So I'm planning to go through all five just to take the opportunity to provide some explanation and background. So first, I'd like to start by reading the resolution title for item eleven A, which is the add-on. This is a resolution of the city council, the city of Miami Springs, Florida, supporting the five referendum on the city's April fourth twenty twenty-three election related to charter amendments and providing for an effective date. The resolution that you have on the dais, it literally says that on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the city council adopted a resolution calling a special election on April fourth for the purpose of submitting to the electorate five charter amendments. And what you're doing by adopting this resolution is you are expressing your support for all five questions. And we've set them forth here for the benefit of members of the public. The five, the five referendum are on this resolution that's being adopted this evening, but they're also on the resolution that was adopted in January. In addition to the resolution that was adopted in January, exhibit eight to that resolution actually shows what the charter would look like if all five amendments are approved. But what I've done is with Councilman Behat, we went through the exercise of identifying where, for those who are interested, where you can find what the charter language would look like if you vote yes on item, on referendum number one, number two, et cetera. So if you'll indulge me, I'll just go through that just so that we can have that on the record. So referendum question number one is relating to the candidate qualifying period. And the question is, the charter provides for a sixty-day qualification period for candidates to run for council. It is proposed that the charter be amended to provide for a ten-business-day qualifying period. The amendments to the charter that would result from approving that question can be found on lines two forty to two forty-seven, which are on page sixteen of thirty-two of the previously approved resolution twenty twenty-three forty-six-eight. All of this information, by the way, is on the city's website. There is a whole page that the clerk's office, I think it's your office that put it together. It has a copy of the sample ballot. So if you lose your sample ballot, you can go online. It's available on the city's website. And then this resolution that was previously adopted and has all of the charter in it and shows what the revisions are. That is also being added to the website if it's not already there. Okay. So question number one is about the qualifying period. It's the, right now, the, the city charter sets your qualifying as a sixty-day period. This would amend it to be a ten-day period. It's pretty straightforward. The intent here is to provide for more efficiency, frankly, through the clerk's office and for the entire election process. So I know that there was a lot of confusion as to people thinking, well, I can't campaign unless I've qualified. And that's not exactly true. Once you've filed certain paperwork with the clerk's office, you can move forward with campaigning. You just can't get your actual qualifications to show that you are going to be on the ballot. And you can actually start collecting signatures to become a candidate prior to that ten-day or whatever the qualifying period is. So what we found in our research, when we were drafting these, is that Miami Springs has the longest qualifying period of any city in Miami-Dade County. We didn't go beyond Miami-Dade County without thirty-four municipalities and the county was a sufficient survey of, of standards. But most cities, as well as the county, have a seven-to-fourteen-day qualifying period. So what we've done, and when I say fourteen-day, I mean, two weeks, or rather, what we're doing, proposing, which is ten business days. So that one is probably the easiest question on the ballot. Uh, question number two relates to partial terms of office. And this is what we, what we called in-house, the, the Fahet Amendment. This was, Councilwoman Fahet requested this one and the council agreed to put it on the ballot. The question provides that the charter currently says that serving on the council for a portion of any term counts towards an individual's term limits. It is proposed that the charter be amended to provide that an individual appointed or elected to fill a vacancy on the council for less than half of a term will not be deemed to have served a full term. So what this would address are individuals who are either appointed or elected in the, in the case that you have a vacancy and they only serve in office for three or four months. But under your current charter, that person is deemed to have served two years, even though they've only served three or four months. So what this amendment would do is say that person won't be deemed to have served the full term of two years if they've served for less than half of a term. So less than half of a term, a year. So you can serve up to a year to fill a vacancy and you won't have that count against you for term limits. That's question number two. And for those who are doing their research diligently, the effect of a yes vote on that would result in a change to the charter on lines three oh one to three oh three on page seventeen of thirty-two of Resolution twenty-three forty-six-eight. On question number three, this relates to filling vacancies. So the question that's on the ballot is, the charter provides that council vacancies are filled by appointment, special election, or both, depending on whether one hundred twenty days remain before the next city election or in the unexpired term. It is proposed that the charter be amended to increase this threshold from one hundred twenty days to one hundred eighty days. One second. So the question, the, the result of that, a yes vote on that charter amendment, the text on the charter would be found in lines three twenty-four to three thirty on page eighteen of thirty-two of that Resolution twenty-three dash forty-six-eight. And the intent with this item was to give the council and the community an opportunity to address vacancies. Right now, you have a very short threshold of a hundred and twenty days. So by increasing it to a hundred and eighty days, you're allowing yourselves the ability to either appoint someone or call for a special election. But the hundred and twenty days was a really brief period of time that really forces you to take on costs that you might not otherwise incur. And so we, we dealt with that, not this past cycle, but two cycles ago, you'll recall that we had a council member resign to run for another office. And due to the timing of their resignation, we were forced to call a special election, which, as you know, costs the city and its residents money. So by making this tweak, it helps alleviate some of that. I can't say it'll always work out perfectly, but it, that is the goal. So that's number three. Number four is also related to vacancies. The question is, shall the charter be amended to require, to require that when the mayor or a council member resigns prospectively to run for another office and the resignation is effective after a countywide election, the vacancy will be filled by special election at a countywide primary or general election occurring before the effective date of the resignation? So this was, this question is intended and the resulting revisions to the charter are intended to provide the community with the ability to, with the, for the council to call for a special election. When you have someone who resigns, like we had in this last cycle. We had councilman, we had a councilman who resigned to run for a countywide office. His resignation came in, in May, but it wasn't effective until November after the countywide election. And so there were some questions from the community asking, well, why couldn't we fill his seat at the November election? And under your charter, you really didn't have that ability. So the county encountered this issue a couple of years ago when Mayor Levine Kava actually resigned to run for county mayor. And at that time, the county had a similar charter provision to the city. And the county revised or amended its charter to provide for exactly what we're doing here, which is under the same stance that we had last year. Somebody who resigns to run in May, but their resignation is not effective until after the general election in, in November. We could have their seat filled at that primary in August or the November election. And then the person elected at that election would take office in November on the date of the person's resignation and they would complete that term of office. So that's question number four. And once again, for those following along, those line changes are on three thirty-seven to three forty-five of page eighteen of thirty-two of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-six-eight. And finally, the question that-
Excuse me.
Yes.
Through the chair. Can you give us the references on number three, Heidi?
Yes. On number three, referendum question number three, the proposed amendments to the charter that would result from approving that referendum would be found on lines three two four to three three zero, which are on page eighteen of thirty-two of Resolution twenty twenty-three forty-six-eight.
Thank you.
That camera's really close up tonight. Thank you. Referendum question number five is the question that Councilman Fahet started with. And this is, the question is, shall the charter be amended to remove obsolete provisions and reflect non-substantive stylistic and technical changes, along with any amendments needed for conformity, implementation, and consistency of charter amendments? So this question addresses line three thirty-two of page eighteen of thirty-two of that Resolution forty-six-eight. And if you recall, I think it was Council, Vice Mayor Loeb, who noted that in our vacancy provisions, we have text that requires the city council to call a special election within thirty days following the first regular meeting of a council after the vacancy occurs. And under Florida law, first, we have to confer with the supervisor of elections in order to obtain her, his or her consent on the election date. In order for the supervisor of elections office to administer an election, they need more than thirty days. So we can never comply with this under Florida law. So that's why we've updated this language to provide that it would be at the earliest time permitted by law. Frankly, if nothing changed here, we would still have to only do it at the earliest time permitted by law because we're constrained by state law. And we rely on other agencies to give us election dates. So referendum question number five is something that's often used in charter amendments to address really a laundry list of items that are outdated. In your case, since we were only doing some targeted charter changes, that's why there's only this one section. But sometimes in other charter reviews, you'll find, you know, there's a comma missing here or there's a Scrivener's error here. And this question allows us to just go in and make those changes. But here, it's very targeted and the only change that referendum question number five would address is on line three thirty-two in section three point oh seven subsection three B of the charter relating to vacancies. So with that, I think I've covered all five questions and all of your questions, but I'm happy to answer any others.
Yes, and I thank you, Heidi. And I just want to state that, um, did you want to speak on this?
Yes, I do. This was an add-on. And had it not been an add-on, I would have signed up for it.
Okay, all right.
Can I speak?
Yes, give me one second first. That I wanted to mention that the reason that we did this is, and, and Councilman Behat had brought up one instance with, with his term. But we've just realized recently, within the past several terms, we've had several instances of someone resigning to run for office. And each time, it's been at a different time and their resignation date is different. And our community, you know, it wasn't real clear as to what we had to do. So people were mistaken saying, why aren't you doing this? And why aren't you, you know, holding the election early when you already know they're gonna resign? We weren't allowed to. So these are really housekeeping, we all agreed on these that were house, basically, housekeeping items to make sure that going forward, God forbid, you know, somebody passes away while they're in council. It's not just resigning to run for something else. They move away. They have, for some reason, they, they just say they can no longer serve, that we can- That we can continue most effectively to um, to meet the needs. Of the community by having someone either appointed or having an election depending on the situation, the timing and all this. But it's very clear what we're supposed to do. We, we spent uh, time. Uh, not just this last time, but the, you know, when we had two members resign from council. Four years ago, I guess. Um, you know, a lot of time here discussing this and trying to figure out, you know, what are we exactly supposed to do in a green? So this helps that. Yes, ma'am.
Neri Owens, one sixty-nine, Corden Drive. I have a problem with the first one. First of all, we are trying to change. The charter, section three, three point oh five, three point oh six and three point oh seven. And in the first one, you're taking sixty days to qualify and scrunching it to ten. In that ten days, you are not allowed, by the way, the charter is written today, to get signatures before the qualifying period. You can only get signatures during the qualifying period. Your petition has to be fifty signatures of registered voters that live in Miami Springs. And the city clerk has to look through it. Confirm the voters and also consult with uh, elections department. On who is living in the Springs and who is a registered voter. And you may have five petitions if there's only one person or ten petitions or however many. In ten days, you're not going to hear back from elections and she's not going to be able to do that. And a person getting fifty signatures in ten days seems almost impossible. This charter amendment was done in nineteen seventy-five. By John Fletcher, who later went on to be on the third district court of appeals. And he was there as a judge for a long time. He has since passed away. It was very clear and concise. People work and they want to run for council. They can't do their job and knock on twenty-five to fifty residents. Homes to get qualified, real signatures and real dates and their. Voter registration number. So I think it's a mistake. That you're only limiting it to ten days. I feel as a resident. And a longtime resident, I might add, that you're trying to eliminate competition. Because no one's going to be able to produce fifty signatures on a petition and qualify to run. And make sure that the city clerk and the elections department have certified it.
Thank you.
And by, by the charter, you can't get right now, signatures in advance. You have to wait till the qualifying period begins. And the last one, referendum five. I do not think that you should take the power away from the residents. You vote. Every resident who is a qualified voter in the city of Miami Springs votes on charter amendments. Every single charter amendment since I've been voting at twenty-one.
Thank you so much.
Yes, but I, I haven't finished, madam. Okay, but we have uh, two minutes for the public. So. Go ahead and, and finish your last comment, but let's.
I believe that we need to not do that. I don't want to give. The city attorney, whoever it might be, the power to change the intent. Or change the language in our charter. That's our constitution of the city.
Thank you very much.
I, I don't normally respond to public comment.
Well, I think we do need to clarify that issue because I, I think that we discussed that. And if, and if it's not the case, then we need to certainly address it that you can get the signatures ahead of time.
Yes, absolutely. You absolutely can get the signatures for qualifying ahead of time. That was a concern that several of you raised.
We discussed during the meeting.
Busted during the meeting. The clerk's office and I have confirmed that the supervisor of elections office does not. Um, have an issue and there's no issue under state law. With a candidate obtaining signatures before the ten day qualifying period begins. Um, what they can't do is um, there's a form.
Yes, D E nine has to be submitted prior to acquiring the signatures. So that's the first form to initiate.
Is what you mentioned that I. Um, Heidi, that I think you mentioned that by going to our city clerk and they can go way ahead of time and initiating that form. Then they can start collecting them.
To touch on the, the turnaround time for elections and the verification of signatures. It's, it's. It still blows my mind how fast the turnaround is on the verification process now. It's, it's so streamlined. Um, I can get a hundred and fifty signatures verified within forty-eight hours. So if it's a matter of, of time, giving me time or in the county time to, to verify signatures, it's, it's rather quick.
Yes.
It's, it's not unusual for other cities also qualify by petition. They have ten day qualifying periods as well. Surf. Is another community that qualifies by petition and they follow this process as well.
Yeah, Councilwoman Bravo, did you have something?
Yeah, I think, I think the clarification that I need is. When does the qualification date start? Cause we, we're going from. The one hundred and twenty, no, sorry, from sixty. Ten, but we can get signatures and all that stuff so long we get our campaign account open. We get the required forms. Then we're eligible to get our petition signed. So I think the question is, all that is great and it's very proactive and it gives you enough time to get your signatures. But when does the clock start ticking as far as qualifying date?
So the way that the charter is being proposed to be amended. And this is, I'm reading from lines two forty to two forty-seven of the, or the resolution that I referenced earlier. The qualification period would begin no earlier than noon on the seventy-seventh day and no later than noon on the sixty-seventh day. Prior to the general election. Um, so the qualifying period starts seventy-seven days before the election and ends sixty-seven days. Prior to the election.
Okay, so you have.
Yes, Councilwoman, go ahead. Go ahead, Walter.
Yeah, so I think the, the more important question that kind of speaks to the point that, uh, that was just raised. Is you said that there's a form that, that marks the beginning of when, when you can start. Uh, getting signatures campaigning and you, so what, what is, how early can one start that period? Because I mean, the, the qualification is just where you get the signatures verified, but how soon? Before an election can somebody announce that they're running, start getting signatures and. So it could be.
There's candidates who file for office two years ahead of time, three years ahead of time.
I think so. Councilman Vasquez, he um, he, I think, almost eighteen months prior to the election. And just submitting reports, as long as you submit reports to, on the due date that.
Right, so just the, the, it strikes me that if, if we focus on the qualifying period just for the. The act of getting the verification of the signatures so that you can qualify. Um, I don't, I don't, uh, it, it kind of speaks to, to the point. I mean, I, I get it. If you only had ten days to get all your signatures and get all that done, then, but. I, I'm, if I'm hearing correctly from the city attorney and, and Ben, it's being confirmed by the city clerk. And again, all of these different charter amendments were, were discussed publicly at our meetings on separate occasions. We kind of took them one at a time, so.
We, I think we asked.
If you can, if you can announce campaign, get signatures of an unlimited time. Uh, leading up to the qualifying period, I really feel like the, the actual qualification period. Uh, can be, you know, uh, ten business days, similar to other, there are other cities that have less of a qualifying and. And it, it strikes me anytime you're the only municipality in all of Miami-Dade County. Uh, that you have a longer qualifying period by a lot. It's because it's been kind of streamlined in other places. And not to the exclusion of voter rights, uh, but just, you know, uh, to me, I feel like it's, it's a no brainer to. To pass.
Uh, through the chair. And in addition to that, uh, of Councilman, uh, it's, it's never been done. It's never been challenged. It's just sat there.
Heidi, can, can I ask for, to, is there a response to the concerns that we brought up about five? It, it doesn't strike me that, that amendment five is. Is, you know, conceding our authority or, or voters' authorities about the intent. That was the, the word used by the resident. The intent of the charter is being stripped away from, from voters because of five. Uh, how would you respond to that?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
The only revision. Set forth in the resolution so that every resident could see exactly what charter provisions are being changed. And it's highlighted and underlined in yellow.
Right.
And this, this referendum question number five. Only addresses line three thirty-two. That's it. And it's, all it does is say. It updates it from requiring you to call for that special election within thirty days. To at the earliest time permitted by law. And that's what we do now.
Which now it's an impossibility.
Correct.
Right? So like that, I started off with that, like, these are all things that clean up things that are highly impractical or even impossible in some cases.
Well, and I think the other point with that, it's all things that we have, keep experiencing in recent years over and over and getting in the situation. So it's like, we're going to keep, you know, waiting for the next term, you know, what happens with this and we owe our, our residents. Um, you know, some, since this keeps coming up with different combinations, some clarity as to, okay, this is how it's going to be handled. And I, and I think, I, I know, uh, when we discuss this at our um, council meetings. That we, we asked a lot of questions and we brought up a lot of potential scenarios and obviously we'll never cover every, you know, base. There's. Something can happen that was totally unanticipated, but at least we can, the things that can be anticipated, which are the situations that we keep having or that we can. Um, reasonably anticipate to occur. Um, this addresses it and makes it just um, a clearer path as to. What he's doing. Okay, is there, um, so with this, and again, this is all something that is on the charter. Councilwoman, did you want to say something?
Yes, um, going back to the, the ten day qualify, uh, qualification change, I think it's, it's a great idea. And I mean, if something is very important for you to run for and you can take out your application. Even years in advance, because there's no limitation, you shouldn't have any problem collecting signatures on time. So if it's something important, it's not something you want to deliver like the day before.
What I would like to see is early on and usually I think, um, as. You know, as residents realize that there's an election coming up in April. I think sometime around the fall is when they start considering it realistically and possibly so, let's try to. On our website and on our social media is start giving instructions, information.
Typically around July is when I start the, well, it's now an electronic campaign packet. Um, we're trying to. Move to, to the website where the information is available. So I, I start all that process in July, even a little bit before then, so that way I'm prepared. For the early birds to, to come in and.
And Erica, I know from my own experience and I'm sure other council people can relate, you've always been very accessible to that. Um, even when I was a resident, thinking, running for the first time, I would come and talk to you and ask questions. And what does this mean and when? You know, and, and you've always been very um, one-on-one. You make the time to explain that to anyone who's considering running for office. Which is important to do because there are a lot of, you know, of, of things that you may not realize and, and being able to sit with our city clerk. Um, and asking the questions and, and getting a, an idea of the timeframe and all is very important. So I encourage anyone who's thinking in the future of doing that to. Um, to make sure to schedule time for that. Okay, yes, sir.
Um, i- if it's not already done, so can we put a link on the first page to, to this? Because it is important and I think people are, are going to have questions. And the quicker we can get it in front of their eyes, the, the better it is.
It's, it's on the website and we've kind of gone on a, like a promotional campaign, um. To promote it on social media and uh, we're posting questions every day or several questions a day, you know, for more information. So that way people are aware, other than the candidate. Uh, candidates being on the ballot, we also have the charter questions as well, so.
And to be clear, what, what the city's promoting is, is, you know, access to information, factual information about, uh. You know, about the, the amendment, which is what we wanted to do is make sure that everybody's informed as they go to. Um, so from the city side, I, I think that that's what we're doing. The, the purpose of the resolution. Was for us to say, hey, we endorse, you know, we support voting yes on all these five referendum item. Uh, because we've done our homework and we've talked about this and these are all things that are, we don't stand the benefit from and it's just gonna. Uh, make things work a lot easier.
Going forward for our residents.
Going forward, absolutely.
For future elections and future councils. Okay, anything else?
Amen.
Uh, yes, we need a.
You have a motion in a second.
Second, all right, then call the vote.
Vice Mayor Loeb.
Aye.
Councilman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. Let's move to item twelve, agenda item twelve and the first, um, item twelve A is a vote of confidence for our city clerk. Erica, as required by um, the city charter. And also a request for a merit increase. Um, I will start by just saying that, um, I think Erica does a phenomenal job. She's very accessible, very knowledgeable, very organized, very, very organized with, um, there, there's a lot of, of. Things that need to be accessible and reachable and filed and, and you're wonderful at that. So, um, I very much appreciate that and. Um, as far as the merit increase, I want to clarify for those that are listening. Um, you. Your position is different from other department directors in that the other department directors are um, hired by our city manager. And our city manager is the one that would determine merit increase or whatever. In your case, as our city clerk, you're actually. Report to us, similar to our city manager.
Right.
So that's why you're asking for, and you're required by charter to have a yearly vote of confidence. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so the last time that you requested a merit increase was twenty nineteen? Okay. Um. We do have information here. A summary of other city clerks, um, for other municipalities. Throughout the county.
To the chair. Erica?
Jackie, want to say something?
I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I can't recall. Erica, how long have you been with Miami Springs as a city clerk?
Uh, since twenty fourteen.
Okay, there are any questions for Erica, any discussion?
Councilman. Mayor, thank you. Um, uh, maybe one or two. First off, I, I, I think that there's no question that a merit, a merit increase of some nature, uh, she's certainly deserving of it. Um, from my perspective, anyway, um, anytime I've had a problem ever with anything in this town, it's taken care of. Usually within two or three hours. I mean, not two or three days, two or three hours. And that's pretty efficient as far as I'm concerned in anything. I don't care the private sector or government, doesn't matter. Um, the other thing is, having said that about the merit increase, um. Remember what we're doing here with, with William Leavenon, the thirty-first of May. And the finance and a CFO coming in here. You're, we're, we're going to have a, have a complete restructuring of, 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 of basically pay scales and you guys. Going forward, they're going to have to deal with this in the upcoming budget. It's, uh, it's going to be a very, a very difficult process. So I, all I'm suggesting here is that we keep that in mind relative to any increase that we might give Erica because it might not fit into what. What the, the future council decides you're going to do with the, the, the pay grades for, you know what I mean, for CFO. And for the manager, for that matter, you know, department is as well. It's, it's going to, it's going to triple down. Um, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of, of, of her getting an increase. There's no question about that. Um, and also I, I, I give her a vote of confidence as well. By the way, one of her, one of her, one of her most, uh. Impressive facets, of course, is that, you know what, every time we come here for a meeting, so there's always a fresh pot of coffee. So good, Erica.
To the chair.
Yes.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the increase and I would also like to provide my vote of confidence.
Okay.
Second.
There's a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? I would just like to mention that, um, looking at the, the um, salaries for city clerks. In other municipalities, um, she, you know, the. In other municipalities, um, she, you know, the salary right now that we have for our city clerk. I mean, I'm comparing it to cities that are similar to ours. Um, you know, South Miami, Miami Lakes, Miami Shores. Um, with this merit increase, she would be right. There are on the above average of those four cities, which I think are the most ones that are population wise and and most similar to us. So. I think um that it's a reasonable request.
If I might.
Yes, sir.
There there are in in this in that list, there are three cities with with smaller population. And even if if given this uh raise, she would still be making less than those three cities. So. I I think she's she's well worth it. I think when we look at it in the long term, five thousand dollars. And and you know, over the year, it it's not it's not much and I I. Certainly think she's deserving of it, so.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, so no further discussion. Let's call the vote, please. So we're we're uh just to be clear, the motion is for the five percent uh merit increase. Is that correct, your motion?
It's correct.
And we all have the vote of confidence. I want to.
Yes.
Clarify.
Yes.
Vote of confidence.
Yes, Erica has my vote.
There that if she needs the vote of confidence of by our charter that we've all agreed to that too. Okay, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Loeb.
Aye.
Councilman Best.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Pat.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
The job everyone. Thank you so much. Available to us. And assist us with so many questions. Okay, so the next agenda item is um. Get back to my is a vote of confidence for our esteemed city attorney. Heidi, as required also by the city charter. Um, I'll start that also. Uh, personally, I I find that our city attorney um. Extremely knowledgeable, but also extremely interested in the details of. She calls herself a nerd for some of this stuff and it's true, like we can get some conversations where, you know, I'm asking really details and she goes, you really want me to answer because I can go into detail on this, you know, and and it'll be, there'll be long conversations, but. Um. Very helpful, accessible at all hours, and I do reach out at all hours twenty four seven with issues or questions. Um. Also, uh, the firm, I find that for the issues that I've dealt with, um, particularly as mayor. Um, the depth and breadth of the firm, the the colleagues that they have with the uh variety of um experiences. Um. Uh, you know, backgrounds, um. The knowledge that they have of, you know, what's happened in other cities and um Heidi has been really, really good at when something isn't her expertise level, there's always a colleague in her. Firm that does that and we've met numerous ones of them um that uh. Will take on the the issue for us and and explain it for um to us and. Um, so in that case, um, for that reason, too, I find that the the quality of the firm. And their expertise is very valuable to our city. I'll let anyone else. Yes, sir.
Um, I I. They have my vote of confidence. Um, just. There's a lot of talk out in the public about uh, you know, why? Because Councilwoman Bravo brought it up earlier, why we don't, why we didn't uh, when Dan Espino uh left, why we didn't put this out forbid. Um, and it's it's a simple answer. We didn't hire Dan Espino, we hired the firm.
Why, Sarota?
So uh, that is the reason and this. And 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 what we're doing today is not only giving Heidi our vote of confidence, but the firm. Um, i- if we didn't like Heidi, we could get somebody else from the firm. We do love you, though. Uh, so I i- it's that that's a simple answer and and I was on the council when we when we voted for the firm and I do believe uh Councilman Best was there also. Um, I I think uh people need to remember that uh when Jan Seiden um was our was our counsel, he was our counsel for thirty years. For the price that we paid for him, we will never, nobody will ever have somebody like that ever. Again, and on top of that, every time we needed a specialty, we had to hire out for that specialty. And a lot of people don't don't realize that. That we paid extra when we needed a special. We don't have to with this firm. There, as we saw it with the sign uh with the sign coding. We had a a First Amendment specialist at our firm that helped us with it. So I. They have, they have what we need and uh they have my confidence, vote of confidence.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to echo those uh sentiments. Uh, I feel like I, since I've been up here, we've had some tough decisions. Uh, and I've always appreciated when there's somebody within the firm that has expertise in their in First Amendment. When we were talking about the sign code or the U T D mural or or somebody that had already dealt with the the golf cart ordinances in other cities. Uh, a- again, I I feel that uh we get a level of expertise on top of the fact that that. The the our current city uh attorney is very accessible and has helped me uh whenever we've had all these tough decisions. Uh, but again, it's uh, it it's the entire firm uh and what they offer, I feel is invaluable uh to me. Uh, when it comes to helping us uh, you know, make the best decisions for the city, uh because they haven't all been easy decisions. And and I've I've relied a lot on the expertise uh and the resources that that Y Sirota have uh provided us. Uh, so again, I just want to underscore uh Councilman Loeb's uh comments and and uh. The city attorney and and for my part, has my vote of confidence.
Thank you. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, it's funny when. When Jan, William, remember, when Jan Seiden was here. He used to say, all right, look, you guys, you know, I'm leaving, you have to find somebody. And I will tell you this, you will never find anyone like me again. And I don't think he was being egotistical about this. He was meaning that. You know, he enlikened it to like a traveling doctor that would actually come to your house. He said, that's what I do for the city. He says, I do anything that the city needs. You're not going to find that anymore. And it's already been said, I'm not going to reiterate, but uh as far as the money's concerned in 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 the payment, you you you, those days are over. You know? When we deal with law up here, we're dealing with more than just what faces the city. What we're dealing with is what the state has to say. What the county has to say, and then what Miami Springs has to say. And Y Sirota or the law firm that that Haiti is a part of, um, hopefully she'll be a partner one day. Always more, pardon, pardon. Uh, well, good. You got to tell everybody then. Um.
She got a merit increase.
She she got a she. Yeah, tell them you deserve, tell them you deserve a merit increase too. Okay. No, but uh, but seriously speaking, that's it. That's very important uh that she parses all of this. Uh, i- what statute is affected by this and this and this. And by the time it gets to to where Miami Springs is, we pretty much know where we're at. We pretty much know which way we're going to go, one way or the other. Uh, she's always uh. Uh, explains stuff, uh, at least I can speak to it and I'm sure my colleagues can say the same uh in in layman's terms. Uh, none of us up here are lawyers. Some of us used to be, but um, none of us are. And so it's very important, just like with this resolution that we just got done discussing a few minutes ago. But that's pretty much lame, in layman's terms. When you go to the polls, sometimes you're voting for something, you go. Scratching your head when you're leaving the polls, you go, wait a minute, I just voted no, but I should have voted yes. And and you're backing, you don't know it, you know, because it's written by lawyers. Well, she she softens the blow in that area and I I greatly appreciate it. And uh, I would say of all these city attorneys that I've had the pleasure of serving with. Uh, she is the most um approachable. Uh, she has held probably more meetings. Uh, one on one meetings under Florida sunshine with each and every one of us, as we're aware. And she's just done a sensational job. She's uh, she she has Miami Springs at heart. And um. And the only time uh to to Councilman uh. Uh, Fahad and uh Vice Mayor Loeb's point. The only time we have ever had to go outside and find an attorney since Y Sirota has represented this city was for labor law. Which is collective bargaining with the police. That's the only time ever with Jim Crossland, right?
Dave Miller.
Now it's Dave Miller, but Jim retired. But yeah, that's the only time and that was during executive sessions that we that we've had. So uh hats off to you. You certainly have my vote of confidence. Thank you, Heidi.
Councilwoman Bravo, did you want to add anything?
Yes, um, I just want to mention, um, I did bring this up back in December and um, I did not bring this uh up because of the matter of one item. Um, I do respect Heidi and I respect her as a professional. I have nothing against her personally. But I did express before in December that I did want to look at our options. I don't have an issue uh contacting her or or any uh. Type of uh business relationship here that that we have going. But uh, like I said in the last meeting, I'm not going to sit and itemize things. I I do have. Things here, but I'm not going to start opening up a can of worms and it's not just one item. And again, Heidi came in a little bit ago. Um, we had other representation with the firm. This has to do with my perspective and the firm. Um. So just to keep this short, I I still stand where where I stood in December and my vote of confidence is no.
We need a motion.
You have one. Motion to move.
Motion to move.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and uh second, all right, so let's call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Loeb.
Aye.
Councilman Best.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo.
No.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. Um, that does the main agenda. We'll move to uh reports and recommendations. Um, we'll start with our esteemed city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for your very kind remarks. Um, on behalf of my firm, it is a pleasure to. Serve and continue serving the the community and and the city council and administration of Miami Springs. Um, we we like to do so with, as the mayor noted, a breadth and depth of experience. Um. You know, I I've been with the city. For six years since Dan and I took over in January of twenty seventeen, when Mr. Seiden retired. Uh, I remember sitting in William's office for the first time ever. Way back then, and it's been a wonderful six years since then. Um, you know, serving with integrity, carrying out all of the goals. And direction that the council throughout those six years has given us. Each council is different. Each one of you has different goals. You usually end up. Um, having a lot of consensus on this council, which is great and it moves the city forward. But we do respond to each of your, each council's direction. So. Um, I could not do what I do for the city without a wonderful team. We have, I I I've lost count of how many attorneys our firm has, um, including our labor and employment attorneys.
Ah.
We don't do the city's labor and employment, uh, but it's not that we can't. We we have a breadth and depth of experience with attorneys who, you know, like Susan Travarthin, who's a First Amendment expert. And has handled things all the way from the trial courts in Florida, all the way up to the Florida Supreme Court, not just on behalf of. Uh, cities, but on behalf of League of Cities, National League of Cities, et cetera. And we we do that often. Um, with our appellate counsel at Gettys and Laura Wendell, who are incredible attorneys. Um. We have attorneys who have. A tremendous amount of experience with the county, with state agencies. We have, there's one of my colleagues. Um, is, I would say. An expert dealing with companies like T-Mobile and Verizon and Crown Castle, because he used to represent. Uh, entities like that. So when we're dealing with the flag at the entrance to the city and the negotiations with those firms. I have someone who I know I can trust and who the city can trust to negotiate an agreement for the city that's really positive. Um, so I know what I don't know. But I also know who to go to in those circumstances. And I'm very proud to say that we have a lot of expertise within the firm to do that. And so. On behalf of my firm, I thank you for your continued confidence in us.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi. Um, and and I just wanted to mention, you know, it's. Our responsibility on the council to look out for the city's best interest. And there are a lot of times I know personally. And I'm sure it's because of sunshine law, we don't know exactly unless it's here at the meeting, but. Where I have said, why can't we do this or why I want to do this and you know, and Heidi or one of her colleagues will have a Zoom meeting, will kind of draw me in and go. This is why and it's okay, you know, um, and that's really important to know that that case law and know what is happening. Um, because obviously, you know, we always want to do. Uh, what's best for the city and 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 sometimes, you know, what's best for the city is just not getting us into situations where um. It's not going to be good.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so uh, our esteemed city manager.
Uh, yes, Mayor Council. Um. As far as the finance director position, um, I wanted to let you know that I have two very strong candidates that I'm going to be interviewing this week. And I'm hoping by Friday. I will send you a recommendation for one of those two. Um, although it's within my purview to hire these finance directors since we're we're in a transition. Uh, phase right now. I want you guys to be a part of it also. So what I'm going to do is when I finish both interviews, I'll send you both resumes. I'll give you a short summary on each one of them. And then I'll tell you what who who I'm recommending for the position so that we can all do it as a team. Okay, so you'll be receiving that by Friday.
And this will be something that we do at our next council meeting then, or no?
No.
You'll just reach out to each of us and then.
And you tell me, you know, I agree, uh, I have this concern and all that, we can discuss. But uh, as I said, there's two very strong candidates with.
Excellent news, yeah.
Significant education and significant experience in city governments. So.
That's wonderful to hear.
Yes, very good news. Okay, um, our esteemed city council. So let's start with Councilman Best.
I I guess all of you have heard recently the news report about the failure of those two banks out on the West Coast, the left coast, I'd like to call it. You know what I heard today? This is for you, uh, Mayor. I heard that the reason in that the these these adjusters and stuff uh have 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 already locked in on about the one, I don't know about signature, but the 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 first one that failed. And you worked in risk management for how many years in the county? Numerous, couple thirty. They found that they didn't have a risk management regulator. They had not appointed one for seven months. And I immediately thought of you. It's just wow, with the Maria, here's this. Anyway, hopefully truer self-help or any of the banks that we have around here, Wells Fargo, uh, don't go through that too and fail. I mean, that's just totally overlooking what you're supposed to be doing, right? And not have somebody in that position. Um, the only other thing I have is uh. Of course, the high school baseball team is 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 well into their season right now. They have a very good game. Uh, coming up uh against Westminster Westminster Christian on Tuesday, one of the best schools in the state. Um. On Dove Avenue at three thirty. Um. They got a good team this year and a lot of injuries right now, but they should come out of it and uh. I I I clearly think they'll win another district title, hopefully another regional and then and go on to the state like they did three years ago. So. Good luck to them going forward. That's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
You, Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes, I wanted to say um, thank you to the whole community of Miami Springs, the outpour of calls, flowers, cards have been. Amazing. I mean, our city is like no other. I felt it to the core uh from my council members to my city staff. Our manager has been so warm. Um, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart because I don't think any big city. Has the warmth that we do. And um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilman Fahad.
Uh, yeah, just uh grateful for the news from uh. From uh William. I think that uh that finance director position is is going to be. Uh, among the most important decisions uh we make. Uh, and a very uh very important aspect of uh of the transition. Uh, that we're going to experience in city uh management. So I'm looking forward to those candidates. And again, my condolences to Councilwoman Bravo. For the loss of her grandfather and uh. Just uh, thank you again uh to Heidi because. You know, we're all kind of working together and it just struck me, you know, a couple of days ago, like, you know, hey, we've got this ballot measure and. And I called her and she was able to to get this done. And I think uh, I think it's important because I I feel like. We're leaving this better than we found it. That's that's our job and our charge is to try to fix things and help things run smoothly for our residents. And I think uh. Uh, I'm proud to be part of this group, uh, this collective that's working together to uh to do what's best for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Loeb.
Um, my condolences to Councilwoman Bravo as well. Um, William, um, i- i- are we gonna have to? Do something on Monday as far as the or our next council meeting as far as the the pay, the salary. Um, for the for the new um. As far as the, the pay, the salary, um, for the, for the new, um, hire?
Uh, once, once I send you the, uh, my recommendation Friday, what we would do is we will probably, uh, I know Bill's working on a new, uh, pay, pay scale for the position of finance director in order to increase the range.
Okay. So we're going to have that next, next council meeting. Perfect. Thank you. Good night and may the good news be yours.
Good news be yours.
I love it.
Uh, Councilman Best.
I just have one other thing. Thank you for indulging me, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to mention because, um, we, uh, this past Saturday night, there was a special event, a gala by the Miami Springs Historical Society over at the Curtis Mansion. And it was particularly interesting to me because I've always been a proponent of eventually moving the historical society onto the grounds of the Curtis Mansion and they've been at each other's throats for years about this. So they finally come together and they did something together and I thought that was wonderful. It was a great event. It was 150, 175 people there. Um, and, and there was a presentation on the history of flight. And, uh, a woman who was the grandfather or great grandfather, uh, was responsible for the development of the aileron, uh, flight and, uh, one of the flight controls on, on aircraft. And, uh, and she told the story of how the Wright brothers stole it away and have, and have taken credit for what her grandfather actually, and she documented it like there was no tomorrow, believe me. Quite interesting. And, and it was just good to see those two uh, groups come together and, uh, maybe down the road they'll end up, you guys will end up, uh, moving that over there.
And, and her grandfather, great grandfather worked with Glenn Curtis and
Did indeed.
and thought very highly of him.
Did indeed. Did indeed. Thank you, Mayor. That's.
Thank you, uh, Councilman. Okay, um, I just, uh, uh, my condolences, uh, personally to Councilwoman Bravo on the loss of um, your beloved family member. Yes, um, we, um, well, like you said, our whole community. Um, and then I just wanted to thank the women's club, uh, for, I was out of town last week at a family event on Thursday, but I know on Thursday, um, they held the, um, the forum for the election and we have, uh, you know, it, the, the women's club, as all the civic clubs in, in Miami Springs, I'm constantly in awe of everything they accomplish for our community. There's just so much that they do. And, um, the, the candidates forum that they held gave, um, our residents the opportunity to ask questions, to get to meet everyone that's running for office. We have, you know, just a wonderful slate of, of people that are running. So, um, thank you to the women's club. It takes a lot of work, a lot of preparation, um, to get that going and to, to prepare for it, but then also to offer it. And they did it from every account that I heard, an excellent job. Um, and with that said, um, good night. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
He probably had money riding on it. He took the under.
That's nice.